It's a regular me, January 24th, 2023. Please stand for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. Right, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come this evening, you know, sort of with a heavy heart in terms of being a Christian and just knowing all the killings that are happening in our country and of men of good faith and good morals. I just asked you, just lift up a prayer. Even if you never said a prayer, just lift up that we be a better people for ourselves and the citizens. Father God, we just thank you so much for this evening that you have blessed us with. Let us have clear minds to do the work for the city of Newman. And let it be a blessing that we, as city officials and leaders of this city, do our works. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call. Councilman McDonald?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Ball?
Here.
Tomlinson?
Here.
Pimentel?
Here.
Mayor Graham?
Here.
Any declarations of conflicts of interest tonight? Saying none. Item number six ceremonial matters, there are none tonight. Item number seven, items from the public, non-agenda items. Anybody from the public wish to speak tonight? All right. None there. Item number eight, consent calendar. A, waive all readings of ordinance and resolution except by title. B, approval of warrants. C, approval of minutes of the January 10th, 2023 meeting. D, adopt resolution 2023, next number resolution approving the statement of investment policy for the city of Newman.
I move that we accept the consent calendar for this period.
I'll second.
We have a first and second. Go ahead and vote on your computer. Motion carries five zero. Item number nine, public hearings, there are none tonight. Item number 10, regular business. A, adopt resolution 2023, next number, a resolution adopting, amended to the Newman Community Conservation Area Master Plan Initial Study.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone, and happy new year.
We missed you last week.
I missed you, too. So the item before you is an addendum to the Newman Community Conservation Area Master Plan Initial Study. As most of you were here then, we went through the process of going through the CEQA process for our conservation area out at Canal School in Inyo, our property out there that we're putting in the news project, the wetland project, the nature park, a lot of fun projects out there. And as part of that process, we did a master plan and we considered all the environmental impacts that constructing our projects would have on the property and the Miller ditch. And we came up with a document that mitigates all those, any negative impacts. And that was circulated and then adopted after a circulation period. And so we, during the design process, had a couple changes. And with those changes, we need to review that CEQA document again and see if there are any additional impacts that we need to mitigate or discuss. And although we found there were no significant impacts, we did an addendum to indicate that. And I am going to introduce now Anne Abusing with Redtail Consulting, who has worked on the project from the beginning and helped us prepare all those documents and has kept us on track with all the regulatory agencies. So first of all, thank you to her. And secondly, I'm going to bring her up. She'll give you a little bit more information and then she'll be available for any questions that you have. And then I'd like you to consider adopting the resolution. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. So I want to start by saying how nice it is to be here in person. The last time we did this, we were still all virtual. And geez, it's really nice to see your faces up close and personal. So, boy, let's see. I will try to keep this brief. It's always a little hard for me because there's so much I want to share about this process. But I know you have a tradition of efficiency and I want to respect that. So Catherine mentioned, and most of you were involved and will recall, that in the spring of, early spring of 2021, we did circulate the CEQA initial study for the NCCA Master Plan and Projects. And as a result of that process, in May of '21, council adopted the mitigated negative declaration. And not long after that, and we knew this was going to happen. It was, you know, this happens all the time. But the best way to go forward was to go forward. And so as design proceeded with the news project, there were some changes in the design that we thought were substantive enough that they warranted a closer look under CEQA. There is a little background for that. Basically, CEQA is all about disclosure. It's about sharing what you know about projects with the community and making sure that the community is aware of the environmental impacts of any project that you or any other public body decides to move forward with. So CEQA requires that if a project changes after a CEQA document is formalized, in this case, the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration, well, you have to look and see, do those project changes change the impacts of the project in an important way? Do they result in new or substantially worsened significant impacts? If they do, that's a trigger to circulate another document, either a subsequent or a supplemental document, depending on how great the changes are and how much revision is needed to bring the document current. And that actually goes through the same process of circulation and and public review because there's something to disclose there. If the changes wouldn't result in new significant impacts, then typically what happens is the lead agency, in this case, you, the city of Newman, would prepare what's called an addendum, which is, I always think of it, and this is nowhere in the CEQA statute, so don't quote me, but I always think of it as being kind of like a memo to file. It documents the process that you, as the lead agency, went through to assess. Okay, here are our project changes. Here's how that changes the project's environmental impacts. Do we have something here that warrants a new environmental document or no? And in this case, the answer is no. So we wrap that all up with a bow in the addendum memorandum. And that's what Catherine is now asking you to formally adopt. And I thought maybe I would share just a little bit on what we did to put the addendum together because with CEQA, the proof is always in the analysis. That's really the guts. So this is what you're signing on to. And then if anybody has questions about the outcomes or anything else that came up as you were looking at it in the council packet, I'd be super happy to answer those as well. Okay, so what did we actually do? Catherine said, and the design teams, I had been in pretty close touch with the design teams anyway. So when it became clear that the project was changing, Catherine asked us, hey, environmental team, we're going to need you to look at the impacts of these project changes. And so what we did was we looked at all of the CEQA resource topics, including, and you know, there's what, 19, 20 of them now that you have to consider under CEQA. We looked at all of those, even the ones for which the original initial study analysis found that there would be no impact. And of course, we had some sense what the most sensitive topics were likely to be. And we paid particular attention to those. And in some cases, that involved going back to our modeling, augmenting some of our modeling studies. Those topics were aesthetics because we were, because, well, actually, let me back up 30 seconds and tell you what the project changes were. And then we'll talk about what the key resource topics were because there's a link there. So the three things that changed about the news project that were important were first, and this was really a fairly minor change. There was a change in the approach to trash control. The project was originally conceptualized with a proprietary trash treatment control device inline in the inlet to the project. And that was replaced with trash control screens in the culverts feeding out of the sediment for bay. And that becomes important in a minute, so hold that thought. The second thing that changed was modifications to the design of the inlet and outlet structures, which increased their footprint slightly and made the apron, sorry about that, made the apron, I should learn to talk without my hands. The riprap apron sizes at the outlet increased a little bit. And then the third change, and this was the big change and the one that was probably the most interesting from a CEQA perspective. The project was originally intended to use the existing access to the site, which you probably know comes kind of right off the intersection between Canal School Road and Inyo Avenue. There's a little bridge over the Miller ditch there. The thought was originally that that would serve as access for both the public and city O and M to the news project. And long story short, it became clear that a much better option would be to provide a new bridge over the Miller ditch from Canal School Road about halfway between Inyo Avenue and Brazo Avenue, Brazo Road. So now we're adding a bridge to the project. We're discontinuing the use of the original existing site access. That's the third project change. That's the one that's the biggest deal and that we were really, I don't want to say worried about, but concerned for. So the key resource topics that we thought were potentially of greatest concern started with aesthetics because of the addition of the bridge to the project, changing the appearance of the project. Adding the bridge also extended the construction duration a little bit and increased the use of heavy equipment. So we wanted to look very closely at air quality and greenhouse gas emissions. Putting the bridge in the project and expanding the footprints of the inlet and outlet increased the extent of work in the Miller ditch. So we also wanted to look very closely at biological resources and jurisdictional habitat and, of course, at hydrology and water quality related impacts. And then finally, because of the additional use of construction equipment, noise was a key focus. So first, the first thing we did was for each of the resource topic, the, well, first thing we did was ask, has anything else changed around the project? Have the background conditions changed? Answer to that was no. We could move on to the next step. For each of the resource topics, then we asked, we looked at each one of the project changes, the changes in the inlet and outlet, the change in the trash control approach and the addition of the bridge, the change in site access. And we asked whether those changes might alter the original impact conclusions. And if so, how and how much would those changed impacts exceed the thresholds of significance that we had used for the original analysis? Okay, well, you've got the addendum memorandum that sums this all up. And I think to cut to the chase, what we found, and we knew this going in, but we didn't know what the answer would be. The original initial study analysis was really pretty conservative. And in addition, the city made the smart choice to incorporate pretty extensive suite of avoidance and minimization measures to reduce the impacts of the project on a wide range of environmental resources from the get-go. And then the city had also adopted additional mitigation measures to further reduce certain impacts as a result of the original CEQA process in 2021. And we knew that the project was going to require permitting from the resource agencies and would therefore be under resource agency oversight and subject to the terms and conditions of those resource agency permits. So there was a lot sort of wrapping this up to protect and to prevent adverse effects. And what we found was, as we went through this systematic process of looking at all of the resource topics under, you know, under the lens of each of those project changes, what we found was that all of the alterations and impacts, new impacts, slight differences, really were pretty slight. And they were all well within the envelope that had already been disclosed in the original CEQA document. So we felt very comfortable recommending that this should all be wrapped up as an addendum. And then, as CEQA requires, considered in making the decision when Public Works recommended that the project move forward. So I think that's probably a good place to leave it. All of the official CEQA language, the boxes that were checked, are in the memorandum. And with that, I think I should stop talking and answer questions.
I got, I got a few questions here. One is that with the change orders on the addendums, what does it look like in reference to prices changing on this project? In terms of cost? Another question is that you talk about a bridge coming from, let's say, Canal Street over into, from Yolo into the project area. I was thinking that, and I, you know, this has been on my mind for some time, that when we start talking about that project and then that narrow street and that we talked about in terms of redoing that street, repaving it or whatever, I think we ought to consider using part of the the project to widen that street to the point where where we basically would have no congestion moving in either direction.
I want to step down.
My main concern is, is the cost of the project, the change in, in the money that we've already allocated for the project.
I want to step down and let Public Works answer that. Thank you, Anna. So as far as the cost, I believe I brought you an item or announced it a couple months ago that we did ask for an increase because there were some additional costs, especially after we opened bids and got the bids in, that we did receive an additional almost $2 million to be able to fully construct the project and take it through completion. That's a grant, increased our match just a tiny bit, you know, I think $75,000 or something like that. So that project is fully funded by the state water board. And so it's not increasing the city's cost, so to speak. Secondly, the the bridge is in Merced County. And the access point is based on comments that we did receive from Merced County about how the entrance would look as you enter into the news project from Inyo. It would offset because that access point is a little offset from the Inyo intersection. And so it would make it, and our traffic engineer looked at that. And between Merced County and our traffic engineer, it was determined that a better option would be moving the access down to, down Canal School to the south a little bit. And then we'll have a pretty wide access, like drive. And then there'll be a bridge going in that'll have a gate there because it makes it more dangerous down at the intersection where that access point is. Because traffic pulls up and then you have somebody trying to come out, but it's offset. So it's not a clean intersection. And so we did look at several different options, but based on feedback we got from the county and our traffic engineer, we needed to move that down. And so we went through the state, made sure it would be okay with them. And then through all the permitting agencies to make sure they were okay with it and what we would need to do to mitigate our impact that was on the ditch because we would have to put a bridge over it, so we're impacting that ditch. And so that is why we decided to go with the bridge.
At the cost that you just spoke of, something like $85,000, whatever it might be, if that is any price in terms of a change, I think that's, you know, that's something that the city would be, you know, pretty much agreeing with. And I'm hoping that Michael would see that, too, because it's, it's a project that I think is very important for the city. And I think that it's going to have a great impact in terms of people visiting us, you know, from the outside. So I'm hoping that, you know, with change orders, you know, and unfamiliar, you know, major projects in terms of change orders and how they sometime come up at, you know, the late moment, you know, in terms of when the project is almost at the end, we have these changes, you know, and all the, all it does is just increase the price that we have to pay for a project. So that's my only concern. I think that with this project and all council members, you know, pretty much agree that this project is something that we really need.
Yes, I agree. And I keep a very close eye on change orders. And I fight tooth and nail to argue why they should do it without charging me anything. And I try to get them for a dollar. And so we usually come to a pretty good consensus on, I'm only going to pay for something that I really should pay for. This, all these costs regarding the bridge have been developed into the project before we even bid it. And so these are hard costs. I can't guarantee there won't be any change orders, but I think we had a really good bid structure and we should get a really good project for the price that was bid and that you awarded.
Any other questions?
On the bridge, what is the size of that? As Councilman McDonald talked about possibly the road widening at a later time, would there be an impact if it was a smaller size built now versus long-term with growth in the area and traffic? Would that be an impact later on down the road if it was a small size?
So there is a pretty good shoulder there on Canal School. And I don't have an exact answer to that question because I haven't seen what Merced County's plans are for that piece of Canal School because that is in the county. I know where, where we take over Canal School, we kind of reroute it and cut through that orchard in the general plan. That's what it's showing. And so we, of course, would be able to accommodate ours. And so I, I'm not sure of what the county has for plans for Canal School. And in, if it ever, if we ever did a project, the county did a project to widen that road and it did impact our bridge, then they would have to address that with their project and make sure that we had a good bridge and access into the project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Anna. The only question I have, it doesn't really have to do with the addendum. It has to do, what timeline are we looking for this project? Again, I know it's been a while since we're talking about this.
So we have awarded the bid and we are kind of in a weather delay right now. The contractor that was awarded is Rolf. He's doing some middles right now. So when the property dries up enough and the property where we're taking the dirt from digging our project out, when those are both dry enough to be able to, be able to get in there without really making a mess. So as soon as our weather turns here and it gets a little warm, it dries out pretty quick. So I'm hoping this spring, we will be in full construction. They're doing some middles now, so we're approving those as they come in. So when it's time and they hit the ground running, then we'll be going. As soon as, I mean, we're checking it weekly to see, can we get in and out of there? They're ready to go. And Rolf, by the way, is the same contractor that's working on our Prince project. And so they're kind of finishing that one up. They had a little rain delay as well. So as soon as they get done with that, I expect them to move right into the news project.
Any other questions?
Mayor had, I just wanted to say, the mayor had a valid point in terms of when the project starts because, you know, we're not promised tomorrow, you know? So we want to be around to see this project, you know?
We can all hope.
Thank you, ladies. Rob, bring you back to council for action.
Move to adopt resolution number 2023, a resolution adopting the addendum to the Newman Community Conservation Area Master Plan Initial Study.
And I'll second that.
We got a first and second. Go ahead and vote. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number B, City Council Reorganization, selection of Mayor Pro Tim and committee assignments. All right, the first assignment that we're going to have to do is Mayor Pro Tim. Currently, Mayor Pro Tim is Ball. So for this, we're going to have to have a nomination followed by a second and then a vote on whoever we wish to take on that role.
I'd like to nominate Scott Ball.
I second that nomination.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other nominations?
I'll third.
We got, we got a third? Go ahead and go ahead and vote for.
My face is beet red, I know that right now.
Motion carries five zero for Mayor Pro Tim Ball. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two is going to be Stan Cog. I'd like to remain the primary on that. Currently, Councilman Pimentel's the second on that. Do you want to remain on that or would somebody else like to step in?
I'll give that one up.
Would anybody like to be on Stan Cog as an alternative?
And if not, I'll keep it.
If you guys saw, Stan Cog meets on Wednesdays, once a month on a Wednesday in the evening, 6:00 p.m. The importance of Stan Cog is millions of dollars. So, you know, being in attendance and the mayor has known this, establishing relationships within that organization and on the board brings millions of dollars to our city in terms of projects. And so I know Catherine and Terry, they do a great job on working on the staff level. And I know the mayor is doing a great job on the, on the policy level. So that's, that's the importance of Stan Cog.
I'm fine with taking on the alternate position.
Okay, thank you. LAFCO, I will remain LAFCO. Stan Soss Mayor's Committee, I'll remain Stan Soss Mayor's Committee. The next one we have is League of California Cities Executive Committee. I am the first one, but I'm willing to give that up. And Ball is the second. Anybody? No? All right, I'll remain on that.
And so the League of California Cities, generally what you have to do on that one is, is once a month, go and eat somebody's, a free dinner and just hobnob people. There's really not much to do for you guys. I'm just, I'm going to throw that out there. So that's, that's a pretty easy one for someone who wants to get on there and just get a, get a free meal. And there'll be a different restaurants ranging from Turlock up to probably Manteca. Sometimes they go a little bit higher than Manteca, I think. But I think Manteca is generally the northern part of it. But Modesto, Turlock, Tracy, Manteca are generally the areas there. And, and you probably get a good meal at least, you know, six times a year or so. You just get a lot of emails from Stephen Gwolff.
So since I picked up alternate on Stan Cog, I'm going to step down as alternate on League of California Cities.
All right, who would like to jump on that?
I think I'll, I'll, I'll try and do alternate.
Anybody want primary? No? All right, I'll keep it. I'll try to make them. All right, number six, school liaison representatives.
That's a Tosca.
No, that's a two plus two.
Currently, it's McDonald and Ball.
I'll, I'll, I'll stay with.
I'll stay, too.
What's that? Okay. There's three. I'll put you down. Number seven, Infrastructure Committee.
I'm on that, too, and I'll stay with it.
Infrastructure Committee has Pimentel's number one and you're number two. You want to stay in those orders?
Sure. I haven't had to do anything on that yet. I haven't got, I didn't get the memo on that one, I forgot. When does that happen?
It's on a as-needed basis. A lot of times if we have a big sewer expansion project coming up.
Oh, okay, that's me.
Yeah, then we would, we would talk about that and run the designs and some of the.
I used to work sewers, yeah, that'll work.
All right, number eight is going to be EDAC, Economic Development Action Committee. Currently, it's Pimentel's primary, McDonald's secondary.
I'll stay at second with.
I'll stay on that one, too.
Number nine is Tosca, currently Pimentel.
I'll, I'll stay with Tosca.
I could second if he needs a backup.
There's not one on that one.
No, it's just.
You just sit there and listen to the ladies talk.
Number, number 10 is Odd Waste Task Force. Public Works Director and Public Works Superintendent are on that one. Thank you, guys. Number 11, Chamber of Commerce. Currently, Ball is on that and then Recreation Coordinator.
I'm happy to stay on that one.
Leave the Recreation Coordinator on the backside of that. Number 12 is West Side Theater Liaison.
I'll, I'll stay on that one, too.
And that's currently.
Me.
Pimentel.
Once a month, sometimes, depends.
McDonald's a backup on that?
I'll, I'll stay, I'll remain with him.
Number 12 is, or I'm sorry, it was number 12. Number 13, Public Safety Committee.
I'll stay with that, too.
Anybody else want on that?
I'll take it. I'll take it.
Currently, it's Ball's primary, Pimentel's secondary.
Y'all stay on that one.
I can do secondary.
You want secondary? All right. San Joaquin Valley Airboard Control District. Currently, primary is McDonald, second is Pimentel.
I'm fine with that where I'm at.
I'll stay with it.
Number 16 is West Side Healthcare Task Force. Currently, primary is Ball, secondary is McDonald.
I'll stay secondary.
Actually have generally both members would attend that meeting.
Oh, really?
There's no alternate on that one. This deals with the opportunity for a hospital or emergency services on the.
Correct.
On the west side. Yeah, I'll, I'll stick with that one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stick with that too.
Number 17, Stan Sloss County City Working Group. I don't know what that one is. Have we ever, what were those?
Generally on that one, sometimes things come up in the mayor's group.
Oh, okay.
That direct the city managers to work with county and then ultimately there may be a bigger group of, of council members working with or supervisors meeting on a topic to resolve.
So currently, I'm the primary on that.
I'll second with you.
Okay. All right. That is it. So we have that set up. Is there anything anybody would like to change currently? If you wrote them down? If not, I can repeat any ones that we currently have.
Mayor, we'll follow up with an email with a, with a written copy. Michael sent that out here, probably early next week to you guys, just as a reminder there. And then you'll have something official for your records.
Okay. And if anybody wants number five, I'm willing to give it up saying that.
How much commitment is, is there for that one?
Minimal.
It's, it's minimal. I'm just on, I'm just on, I'm on LAFCO, the Stan Sloss Mayor's Committee, Stan Cog, those are all.
If, if it would help you out, Mayor.
What committee am I on when I have to go to Modesto? I haven't had to go there yet.
That's the EDAC one and it's generally, I mean, they do about quarterly meetings and then generally on Thursday afternoon.
You're on EDAC.
Okay.
They send you emails.
I'll take that one.
They send me something?
Yeah, they do. They send emails.
Okay, thank you.
All via email. All that stuff happens via email.
Yeah.
Oh.
So when we get them, we'll make sure, we'll make sure we contact you to give you a heads up.
Yeah.
And Mayor, with the, just for the whole council, you know, there are division meetings for the League of California Cities. Each of you are always invited to those meetings. You just have to let Mr. Qualls know, send him an email. We'll forward those off to you. You just send him an email saying you want to go. And you're, you're welcome to go there. And again, that's a, the dinner is free for you. If you're taking a spouse, they ask that you pay for your spouse's meal.
So Shane, you said you'd take that?
Yeah, I'll take that one.
You're good with that?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody, everybody good where we're at, we're at on these?
All good.
All right. And Mike, you'll send something out on that?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be included in the minutes as well.
Which one did Shane, was that the League? Number five, League of California Cities.
So it won't, it won't be Councilmember Ball, but it'll be Tom Munson.
Okay. All right. Items from the district, Stan Sloss County Supervisor, he's not here tonight. Item 12 is items from the city manager and staff.
Thank you, Mayor. So tomorrow night, we have an item going before LAFCO and that would be the CCID detachment. So over the years, as city, as properties have been annexed into the city, traditionally the case is as they annex to the city, they detach from CCID. But dating back to the 90s and sometimes 80s, those detachments didn't happen. So there's a, a number of residential properties that are in the CCID irrigation district. So we've worked with CCID and submitted an application tomorrow to be heard. Had LAFCO at the 1010, 10th Street building it. I think it's 6:30 p.m., 6:00 or 6:30 p.m. So I'll be attending on behalf of the, of the city and presenting our case. I don't anticipate we're going to get any pushback from anybody and I anticipate that Jared Martin will also be there from, from CCID. So tonight we had, the news project was out here. Thank you for going and adopting that resolution. You know, that is a major project for the city. You know, we started that project with a vision in like 2013 and here we are a decade later and we're just waiting for the sun to come out long enough to dry that land up so we can get some heavy equipment in there and start moving, I don't know, 800, 1,000, no, 2,000 trucks worth of dirt away from it. So it's going to be a great project. We think in the end that we'll probably end up submitting some applications for, we think we could probably send an award-winning project that tried to bring some notoriety to it. So then again, as I think Councilmember McDonald and maybe Pimentel says as well, it will be an economic development engine. It will attract people to our area because there is nothing like it in the San Joaquin Valley. So it's going to be a great project. And then we have the right, we have a wetlands project that's going to go along with it. That's phase two or project number two. Then we have the nature park. Mayor, I know you're a big fan of that one. We've already received a $2 million grant for that. And that's the one that you emailed me today. We've already received that, so we're just trying to put together a $2 million match. That, upon its completion, will have one of the largest, longest ADA accessible trails in the region, if not Northern California. So it's going to be a great project on there as well. And then the third piece of that component for the Newman Community Conservation Area is, is our partnership with UC Merced. We currently have a active partnership with UC Merced. They're dedicated about 15 to 20 acres, I believe it is, for their environmental engineering department to create an outdoor laboratory here. So their graduate students can come out and do graduate level studies on that particular site. And it's going to study a couple of different things, cleanup of ag water, groundwater recharge, mercury testing, a few other things on there. So, you know, in the end and long-term, when that fully develops, you get all those projects coming, it really is going to be an economic development engine in terms of bringing people from outside our area to Newman. So it's going to be a good project. And, you know, you already awarded the, the contract to Rolf as, as Ms. Reyes, Catherine was talking about. And through Catherine's hard work and through the hard work of our consultants, we went out and contacted the state and the, the bid came in over our original grant, but we were able to get an extra $1.6 million for that project. So all told, this, we, we've been able to get about $8.5 million worth of grant monies over time and whether that's the engineering and the studies and, and the construction for this particular project. So again, it's a testament to Catherine and her team of working really hard to get there. And then just lastly, you know, we're working on the Northwest Newman and so they had a little setback when their, when their property owners had some medical issues. So we're trying to get some speed on that. They're probably looking at, looking at annexing the rest of that land so they can start planning for some residential out there at the Northwest Newman Project. And that'll be going forward. And then we have another project called Agriana. They're on the other side of the railroad tracks, north of Sherman Parkway, between Sherman Parkway and Stir Road and then east of the railroad tracks. Someone wants to master plan that whole area out there. And we indicated to them, we didn't, we didn't mind if they master planned the whole area, but they weren't going to annex it all at one time. We just cannot accommodate that kind of pressure on our services. So just know that they've already been told that and we're going to reiterate that, that we're not interested in annexing that whole thing at one time. So they're going to have to come in with a phasing plan and talk about how they would phase development there and, and how the infrastructure would meet the planning of the infrastructure and construction of the infrastructure would meet the construct, the construction of housing. With that, I can answer any questions you have. And just a reminder, I'll be out of the area starting next Wednesday, return, return back to work on the following Monday, the 6th. In my place, Chief Richardson will be acting city manager.
Yeah, I just want to say that it excites me, you know, when I hear about projects that are hidden in Newman because I hear a lot of, you know, feedback from outsiders how they are recognizing us as the number one city on the west side. And it excites me, you know, when I hear, you know, you guys talk about moving forward, not with just the grants, but with the projects because I know that once these projects, Mayor, are through, we're going to have influx of people coming into our area. And one thing, we need to be ready to where we can accommodate them. I'm hoping that, you know, that once we get in the growth pattern, that we don't turn out like Patterson, we do the slow growth. But I'm, I'm hoping that we can look in terms of a hotel and another shopping center. And I'm hoping, you know, as a 74, 75-year-old guy, that I can be around to see the development happen, you know, because I know it's going to bring a smile to your face, chief's face and, and especially Lou because he's the guy that keeps us floating. And I just want to just congratulate you guys. You guys make me feel good, you know, in terms of me doing research and, and reaching out and letting people know where I'm located and what we're doing. So just keep up the good work. I, I really enjoy that.
Appreciate that, those comments. And just to further clarify, we have, the engineering is continuing on the widening of Jensen Road as well. So that project is constantly moving. So we're still trying to, we have to design the underground, the water and the sewer and purchase them right away and a few other things. But don't, don't, if I don't report on, don't, don't think we haven't, we've stopped on that project. That project is continuing going and we're really pushing hard to try to get maybe the fall or next spring to, to be pushing on that.
And just to follow up on what Councilman McDonald was saying, I think in the project you were talking about on the northeast side of town, you know, when we talked to them, we, we expressed that we want nice, controlled, slow growth and that they're able to do their master plan, but we want to be very controlled. And I think that's important because the project, the news project and all that kind of stuff, that helps build our town to something more than just a bunch of ugly buildings that are thrown up overnight like Patterson was. And, and so it gives our community more of a, just a different feeling.
Yeah, and we're in, and we're in the process of building a community. A community is more than just buildings. And so, you know, those are the amenities that go with it. And so when we do our parks and mast, Parks and Rec master plan that you approved at your last meeting, when we approve those things and start getting the community support, we know what they want, right? So then we can tell the developers, the community wants tennis courts out there, you're going to put tennis courts, or community wants pickleball or whatever they want out there. And so that's what we'll tell them that if you want to build here, this is what you're going to build.
Thank you, Michael. Ali?
Muhammad Ali, you used to walk into the, into the arena. Ali, Ali.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Not too much to report on the recreation side, but just to report that we do have the unsheltered pit count this Thursday, the 26th. We're going to be doing it from 9:00 to 12:00, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Ms. Catherine Reyes and C.S.O. Zan are going to come out and we're going to be doing that count all in our Newman City. We are going to give out comfort kits and we will be doing surveys. All the surveys take place on our cell phones nowadays. We no longer use the clipboard and our faces are down. They're in the social aspect of doing the surveys. We will be partnering with the FRC Family Resource Center for a warm meal and they can gain more information there. The meals are going to be at 11:30 in the morning. So if you happen to see any homeless out there that you're attempting to help or want to give more information to, you can guide them to the FRC at 11:30 a.m. And that, we'll, we'll be there as well to do some quick surveys for them. So with.
When you say FRC, are you saying the McConnell Building?
No, Family Resource Center. So that'll be the building, the smaller trailers right next to, to that building. And with that, I may answer, answer any questions y'all may have.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Chief?
Just quick announcement that we are partnering with the Gustine Police Department and Orstembah High School on Saturday, February 4th for another etch and catch program. We invited Gustine last time, but they weren't able to attend, so they wanted to do one. So we're partnering with them, but it will be at Orstembah High School, open to our community and Gustine. So from 10:00 to noon is what, or 10:00 to 2:00 is when they're going to do it.
Thank you. I didn't have anything to report tonight, but happy to answer any financial questions you may have.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give you a couple of updates on all the studies and plans we're working on. We've got the Veterans Plaza or Veterans Memorial. We haven't decided what to name it. The, the, we'll be doing some outreach and presenting what the community has given us as far as input and bringing something for you all to look at. That'll be in the very near future. We are also getting ready to kick off the T Street Corridor Plan that will include a lot of public outreach and we'll start looking at what the T Street Corridor needs as far as pedestrian bicycling, street improvement, storm drainage in that immediate area. We also are kicking off this spring, the Urban Forest Management Plan. We got a grant from Cal Fire to do that plan and they'll be inspecting every tree the city owns and giving us a breakdown of the condition and health of those trees and then advising us what we should do to have a good urban forest that will outlast all of us. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to doing that one. It'll give us some resources to use as we look at trees that have already passed their life and need to be removed, to what type of tree do we plant to replace it. We made it through the heavy rains and I just wanted to thank all the neighboring agencies that were out there helping. It really was a coordinated effort and I appreciate it. All the agencies and all the other departments here in the city, everybody did a really great job and I was happy to see that we didn't have any major flooding in Newman. And it is really a team effort between all the neighboring agencies. Projects, we're waiting for this rain to let up so they can finish a couple of projects, start a couple new ones. Thursday, we have a bid opening for the McPike Trunk Line Project. That's two projects combined into ones to kind of save us a little bit of money out of the wastewater plant. And so you'll be seeing that. Once we open bids, we'll analyze them. I'll get a recommendation from the engineers on who the most responsive bidder is and then I'll bring that to you for consideration, hopefully here in the next month or so. That's all I have. I'll take any questions though.
Yeah, how many downed trees did Newman have this year?
I think we had about four downed trees.
That's not bad.
No, it's not bad at all. It's to be expected with that type of saturation and the winds that we had. Not too bad.
Good. With the Veterans Memorial, we did talk about possibly having recognition blocks, you know, like all of our veterans in the city of Newman and veterans that basically we know of, that we could basically have blocks, put their names on it. I think we spoke about that at one time. The reason why I brought it up is that the federal government have grants for any type of veterans memorial. So maybe take a look into that and maybe we could get a lot of that. And I think it's very important that we recognize the veterans in the city of Newman and even the past ones that have passed on.
And we, we had talked about that as kind of stones that could be put in and replaced, you know, as people go and we can add them and remove them and, and even use it as a possible fundraising thing.
Right, yeah.
At the same time, depending on, but if there's grants out for it, that's.
I will look into that and we did get a lot of feedback from the community that they were interested in doing pavers to identify families or veterans of, you know, families of veterans or veterans that we've lost or, and donation-based. We haven't cemented it in like exactly what it looks like, but that, there was a lot of interest from the community for that type of feature.
I think I may have mentioned this before too, if there's a committee or something that I could be involved with.
Okay.
I wouldn't mind doing it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd just like.
I just like, since we were on the topic for the storms and that, for all the departments in the city, everybody did an outstanding job being on top of stuff, from police, fire, all the way through public works. They did a great job being right on top of where things need to be. We had a couple areas that flooded that you actually wouldn't think of, but the pumps hadn't kicked on, and they, Public Works was out there quickly and got right back on top of it. And so it was nice seeing, as the amount of water that we got, that there wasn't a whole lot of flooding, which means everybody, Public Works was doing their job, keeping everything clean and running. So outstanding job from them.
Thank you.
Because a long time, people around here said they had to use boats and canoes to move around here, so that's telling you guys are doing a great job.
Airboats. Here's our, get some airboats.
Protem?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Collins?
I have nothing.
All right. With that, I have nothing tonight either. Thank you for everybody's work, but that, Osfer and German.
I move to a German.